One housing authority order commissioner's regular meeting session today, April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M. So we have the roll call start there, Commissioner, no Chair, tell me that. Commissioner Marshall Martin.
Commissioner Ted Waters.
Harold Dominguez interim executive director.
Molly O'Donnell, helping director.
Assistant hall assistant.
Sarah Arlene, building safety.
D C Galanar, regional manager.
Suzie Gallo, ferry.
Sean McCallum, Commissioner.
Commissioner, I'm over here.
City attorney, you can wait.
Hi, it's the secretary of service.
Thank you. And who goes to probably the floor?
So we have agenda revisions and submissions of documents we are denied. Do we have approval for this to move?
So we do have agenda revisions and submissions number two. Eric, we had a resolution in that the L H D C was supposed to approve. We couldn't get them together because of wherever we're at. Tam redrafted a resolution to take that into consideration. And so we're attached to this document.
Okay.
It's a fourteen.
Fourteen.
Yeah, we'll go into the details.
We'll go into the details.
Oh, okay. So revision is, there's a revision.
There's a revision. We just didn't know there's a revision and its impact.
That was the extra email that you sent.
Correct.
Okay, great. So we need to review and approve minutes of January twenty-first. No, no.
Fourteen.
I am reading the wrong thing. I actually read the minutes. So we can have the approval of the March fourteenth minutes.
Can I have a motion?
I need to approve the minutes.
Say.
So they've been approved by Commissioner Badalberr, seconded by Commissioner Montoya. Is there any discussion of those minutes? All those in favor of passing these, they are fine. Those opposed. They're nothing though, minutes have been, that was a either call. They've been approved, you know. We have public voting to be heard. I see public hearing of three minutes if you should state your name and address.
So I am Georgiette Johnston. I think she got my thing. And I came with him because there's, we're having some problems of noise and like people above us. And we just wanted to see maybe how we could work it out because this lady we have, I have, I've known her. She's been in there since, seven years since I have. But she has a, what is it? It's a.
A walker.
Oxygen. And then she has a walker and then she has a T V. Anyway, I've lived there going on seven years and myself, I had some problems with the lady upstairs. Was running a sweeper at two or three in the morning and she's driving furniture and I listened to her for about a week or so. And then I went up real nicely and she quit. So she didn't wanna, so anyway, this, this other lady, him and I went up and talked to her. And she kinda struggled a little bit with that. And then he went up by himself. He can talk about himself. And I went in and I heard a noise in his place. It sounds like a train where nobody can endure it, you know, living there. And, and so anyway, I just feel like somewhere, somehow, I know there's several of them that have that, have this. And I just feel like somewhere, somehow, we ought to be able to work out this with the noise and stuff. I did bring a letter that I did write her real nice when I went and visited her, which I'll give you and Harold. To, because you know, it's not that the person wants to have problems. It's just that we wanna work it out. And she did kind of, but I'll let him set up and tell, you know, kinda what went on in a nice way. Because she kinda got upset about different things. She has poor health and stuff. But I just wanna know, I just want everybody to know that nobody can put up with that. I mean, he, he's struggling, I couldn't either. And then down below, the lady below me, she had problems with my grandkids coming visiting. And she complained a little bit at one time and kinda went, we worked that out. We're the best of friends. And I am good friends with Pam too. But I'm just, I just wanna say in a nice way that nobody could continue enduring this. And it's not, I could say it's not fair. It's not, nobody wants to have heart going somewhere. There's gotta be a solution to not let, to some way work out the noise. Okay? Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Kevin McKee. I live at Spray Creek Departmental, number two sixteen. That's under L H A, Miller Park, Oklahoma. And I've been there eight and a half months. The last three and a half months, a new resident lived in above me. And she just happens to have a lot of chronic, long-term medical problems. And part of that includes having to have an oxygen machine on twenty-four hours a day. Seven days, it doesn't ever turn off. And we asked her and she said, well, I advise not to ever turn it off. So this machine makes quite a bit of noise. A lot of vibrations that go down into my ceiling, my floors, my walls. And the bedroom is not usable. And the bathroom, if you're cooking out of there, that's fine. And I've been on the couch over a month. So it's, it's afforded me a little sleep. I have to take naps during the day and I do use air bluffs and I do use pillows. I was even on the couch and I don't like that. So I can hardly stay in my place. It's not really just an inconvenience, but it's actually a health problem. And it's been a new rule, a lot, a lot, a lot of studies over the last seventy years allowed linear sleep deprived, particularly in deep sleep. And in deep sleep, a number of things happen. But the key things are the brain goes into a theta wave mode. It really helps the mind-body complex regenerate and renew at night. It's also in deep sleep that we have REM sleep, R E M, rapid eye movement. And in that sleep, that's where we dream and do a number of things to once again renew and regenerate the mind-body. And when that is lacking or deprived, we have a lot of harmful effects to mental, emotional, and physical abuse. In our lease, it is stated that we have a thing called quiet time. This quiet time is supposed to be from ten P M. to seven A M. And it was stated there, but hard to enforce, I guess. So it's not always quiet during that time. A nice idea to try to guarantee that people get some sleep. And in terms of legalese, we have a term in the lease that was shared with us by Lisa a week ago or so. It's called quiet enjoyment. This is sort of a legal way to refer to just an inherent right that people have to some quiet enjoyment. So it is in our lease and there's not a lot of quiet and it's difficult to enjoy with the right quiet in sleep and silence. I'd like everyone to remember that everything that comes from the machine is not heard. There's immuneable vibrations and frequencies that come out that are not heard that permeate walls and floors and air spaces. I am directly under her, so I kind of may get the brunt of that, but there's other apartments that are affected also.
Sir, so your three minutes are up. I think that we have the overall theme that you are addressing this way.
Okay. Just one more few sentences.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, who do you agree with?
The community manager and then we do have a name for our housing situation here, so we can't discuss exactly.
Okay, thank you. We are now at, oh, we're here.
We're here to get some hockey.
I can go see hockey, right? My name is Lance Wicker. I live in seventeen fifty Collie Street. I won't waste, you know, half your time today. I just wanna let you all know it's Animal Cracker Day. It is also my girlfriend's birthday. So I don't know if any of you know my girlfriend, but it is also National Colette Day. So I will let you all get to your meeting and thank you for letting me be heard. You all have a great day.
Eighteen is that best day?
You're just listening to us.
Thank you.
Is it really?
Yes.
Well then, you'll have to change your name to Colette though. You all have a good day. Spread some happiness somewhere.
So we're in elderly business and talking about the resolutions. When I looked at these, I was a little, when I read them, I have two that are twenty twenty-three fourteen. Did you see that was a fifteen? That's why it's a little bit.
There's a fifteen, but there's two that's.
There's a twenty fourteen and a revised twenty fourteen. This packet has a fourteen and a fifteen. You have two fourteens.
One has the red line. And then we have two fourteen. Oh, not gonna be yet.
I have a fifteen.
It's a king of the packet.
I have a fifteen.
So Eric has the fourteen at the end of the packet or the fourteen in the, correctly, the package?
The fourteen in the packet.
It says, Doc, we can discuss the red line.
Okay.
Oh, got it. Thank you.
You wanna go?
So who wants to do the resolutions?
So I'll give a description for these. Again, Molly O'Donnell. So in, in advance of the anticipated closing of the Xenia project, so closing meaning on the, the tax credits and all the financial dealings. That's anticipated to happen by May twelfth. And so this is your last opportunity to see this before that happens. So we have to do a couple of items of business for that. So resolution twenty twenty-three fourteen is, has a couple of things on it. The most simple is this board has already accepted ARCA grant funds from the city. And so you'll be loaning the, those funds into the partnership so that it's in the waterfall of the deal structure. So that's one item that if you approve that would happen. And then the other one is the L H D C has already voted to provide two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars in funds to this project. They originally voted back on March twenty-second to loan it straight into the partnership. But what we would like to do instead at special counsel's advice is to have them grant the funds to L H A. And L H A loans into the partnership because they want to dissolve. And so therefore, we don't have to do another subsequent step later to move that all back over to L H A. So that eventually, L H A would be, if the loan is paid back in the future, either at sale of the property or, or recification, then that will come to L H A. At that time, you also have the opportunity to just leave the money in if it's staying affordable or meets certain goals that you have. So the reason that there's an amendment is that we were trying to get L H D C to modify their vote and enter a resolution here last week in advance of this meeting to change that recommendation from a direct loan to the partnership to go through the L H A first. But they weren't able to get a quorum because one person is out of the country and doesn't have their own access. So we revised the resolution so that it basically says, subject to the L H D C agreeing to do the grant option, then you will accept the grant and then load it into the partnership. So it just adds that qualifier there. Isn't that that one?
Any questions, Melissa?
Just three floors. So could I motion to?
I will approve the resolution twenty twenty-three fourteen.
Second. Commissioner Waters made the motion to approve twenty twenty-three fourteen, seconded by Commissioner Badalberr. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, can I let go? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That passage you had, thank you. So we have twenty twenty-three fifteen. Can I have a motion?
Yeah.
If you'd like a description, I can give a description.
Or you just did with the O H G.
This is a different one. This is for the Hoover project. We've got two, two big, two big finance deals on this tonight. So this is where, at your last meeting, you accepted ARCA funds as well in the amount of eight hundred thousand dollars to purchase the land at seventeen sixty-four and seventeen eighty Hoover from the L H D C. So this is to the resolution to sign the purchase and sale agreement and L H D C will be considering a similar motion once they have their form. So this will stop that purchase process.
Can I have a motion?
I have a resolution, twenty twenty-three fifteen.
Second.
So if they move by Commissioner Rubrique, saying we buy Commissioner Montoya, is there any discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, let's vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passage you had, thank you. So you have the directors of group work.
So a few things on this. We're going to development updates. Molly's already talked about proposing for Xenia, which really triggers construction changes, which is really good. Obviously, we've talked a little bit about Chrisman that continues to move forward for having some utility issues with Excel. It's impacting a couple of other things. We had a retaining, Molly should dissolve. I think everyone will do that. That's solved and so now we just need to get the gas line moved so that can continue. It's not stopping anything, but it's not allowing, not allowing it to move strictly as they would want. In terms of the Hoover property, we are continuing to move through site design on this one. And then we had Shannon here review all and we talked about the issues with concept of early childhood and the financial constraints of that. Since the last meeting, we've been made aware of a couple of opportunities for grant funds to partner on that early childhood piece. So we're rebuilding it back into the site plan and looking at how we can leverage some of the additional funds. There's a couple of sources that we're evaluating and hopefully we'll have some more information in the near future. So as you all said before with the housing, if we can't get it, we'll see what we can do. So we're still moving a little bit back and forth on that piece and hopefully we're, we've got some really good indication that I think we'd be really competitive in some of these grants. I think now it's really just figuring out which one we're going to afford if we can't get them.
Foundations.
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 Yep. So they're really working all the avenues in terms of where we can try to make this happen. So everyone's staying focused on it, but obviously we need to get the housing done in timing. And so that's really the development updates that we have today. In terms of, before we get into some of the more specific information that the rest of the staff are updating on, one of the things that we've been working on is trying to solve the snow issue. So last year.
Can we get that some money?
Trying to manage the cost of, trying to, we want it to snow. We want it to snow.
Yes.
But we wanna manage the cost of snow removal. So last, last year we budgeted a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. I think the budget, actual expenses on snow removal were just over two hundred thousand dollars that we had to deal with. So obviously, mother nature really rules how we approach it. So I think we talked to you all about partnering with the city and fleet services to really see how we can get some equipment in so we can bring that in-house. Part of the other challenge that we're having, the contracting for snow removal, they're facing the same labor issues that we're facing. And, and so while they've done a good job, you know, we can still struggle with getting snow removed on time because of their staffing issues. We had a conversation this week and it looks like we're going to be able to do a few things. One is we're going to acquire a truck that's still in really good shape that the city was gonna put on auction. And I'm trying to open up a spreadsheet. And get a blade, a lift gate, and a sander on that one. And it looks like all the costs in year one is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty-one thousand dollars. We will then have to start a replacement account for that, which the actual cost of that truck new is probably gonna be somewhere in sixty-five thousand dollars. So we're gonna want to set a five-year replacement on that one because of its age. So year one, we're thinking would be total cost, including maintenance and fuel, about thirty-one thousand. And then over the next four years, that's gonna be twenty-two thousand on an annual basis. Looking at another truck, it's probably gonna be good work. And that is not gonna have the sander, but it'll have a utility box, which will double then for the maintenance staff and then for the facility. Our estimates, that's gonna be fifty-four thousand in year one and then another twenty-two thousand on an annual basis. So what that means for us, when we look at where we are in the snow budget today, we've spent about sixty-five thousand dollars today. I went ahead and pushed that up pretty aggressively to say, well, if we spend about eight thousand, well, we have enough. We have sixty-eight thousand. So for this year, for the two trucks, if we did it, that leaves us a gap to fill to get the two trucks and finally spend about sixteen thousand dollars. We're also looking at a trailer and a Kubota style that will cover a heated area and blade or brush. And that looks like that's a little more expensive based on age, but we think that's gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of forty thousand dollars. So that adds another fifty thousand for this year and then ten thousand on an annual basis. So theoretically, I think worst case scenario, we'd have to bridge ninety-eight thousand. The timing may actually work out with all this second truck because it may not, we may not get it until next year, which we can move high ends of the next year's budget to bring that down. The punchline in all of this is we think we will, A, give, not A, we're very confident we can get faster service at all the properties and get a higher quality. But when you move into the next year, the on-billing cost with the replacement built in is gonna be about seventy-six thousand dollars. So if you look at it in terms of what's budgeted at a hundred and, I don't know, a hundred and seventy-eight thousand. That's going to generate about a hundred thousand dollars in savings on an annual basis for the housing authority. That will then augment the housing authority general fund, but it'll also release some pressures on each of the individual property. So we think we're gonna get a higher level of service and it's gonna be a lot less expensive. And so those are things that I can work in with the existing budget, but I just wanted to go over that in terms of, this is the trajectory that we're, we're trying to work on. We may have to come back, depending on some timing issues, on bridging that funding gap. And we may have to do a short-term loan between the housing authority and the city to get us into the next budget here. In this case, I am not touching any of the city aspects of this. Jim and Cash are handling that, so Jim's the city's negotiation, negotiating league. And I'm over here and it's not inherently any different than what would be between fund to fund and the city side. So we're going through the same process. Tremendous cost savings and definitely an operational improvement. I am starting to talk to the properties about this as we're going around. Doesn't really change the fact we can't shovel between cars, which is still a liability issue. But we're really happy with this approach because it's highly possible we could exceed the two hundred thousand this year and probably be in the neighborhood of two hundred and fifty thousand if we have a few more snows and the fall turns out like it did last year. So we need to really financially make this move. Any questions on that?
No. Take care.
Okay. On the topic of selling buildings, you know, we have the Center for People with Disabilities that are in that facility. We actually are now engaging with them in terms of, so Village Place and Crosswind House, there's a small rectangular building to the north of that. They have been in that building for a long time. And they're definitely interested in purchasing it. We're in conversations with them now. One of the things that we're working out is actually going into a service contract with them for a value that will be negotiated and with the price of the building. But we're, when we're dealing with issues related to individuals with disabilities, we can come in and provide support services to those individuals and also work training programs with us. So really bringing a value add into what we're doing. So hopefully in the very near future, we'll have some kind of information about that. We talked about vouchers. And one of our goals is to increase the number of vouchers that we have. As you all know, it's not necessarily the number of vouchers that you need to increase. It's actually the value of dollars that you get coming in so you can have more vouchers. Molly and I made a presentation on four one ten housing to a community group. One of the questions was, when are we gonna get more Section eight dollars in this year of housing choice vouchers that we're talking about? And we said, well, HUD has to give them to us. And obviously, when we came in and we talked about the work we needed to do and we evaluated how many vouchers we had active in the community and using as much money as we possibly can. That's important because that tells HUD you need more money because you have more limited circulation. We've been notified that it's looking like we're going to, we're pretty confident that we're gonna get an increase in the dollar about that we're getting from HUD for housing choice vouchers. We think it may be in the neighborhood of seven point five percent. You'll be running at ten percent with our goal. And so, you know, it's never done until it's done when you're getting HUD dollars. But it looks like we are gonna get injected more funds into our housing choice voucher program. That's key for a few reasons. One, that actually gives us the ability to increase our project-based vouchers. So as you get more money, that lets us have potentially more project-based vouchers. So when you're trying to fund a Hoover project or Xenia, you need to bring those project-based vouchers into it to make the financials really work over time. Obviously, we can assist more people as we're doing this. But I think the big thing, when we talked about this, is when we set the goal of we wanna get more dollars in, we talked about we need to get better at spending the money and making sure we're riding that line and we're, you're as close as you can to your tool, where you don't overspend, but you're not underspending. And I think more, you know, in the past, last year or two, other housing authorities did get more money into these accounts than we did. So the fact that I think we're now starting to enter into that conversation of getting more funds from HUD is really a testament to the work that all of these folks are doing. Kendra and really managing that housing trace and managing that housing trace voucher where we're, we're expending a lot of our, where we're, where we need to be. So hopefully next time we'll have a hard number.
Seven and a half percent increase in funding the existing housing voucher.
I am, well, that is, depends on the, the year. But I'm waiting for, Kendra's been in audits all day. We have our auditors in town. So she went home for the day and I was asking her for the exact number and it hasn't gone through yet.
Yeah. So we'll let you know, but it, you know, it's, it's good news and we're gonna pass that on to you.
So Harold, how many landlords are actually accepting Section eight? Are there any?
Yeah, we have a lot actually that are taking.
All there are?
There are.
Good.
We're trying to assess on the other side, we kinda talked to you about this before, is I think if anything, we're seeing that at times we can't, individuals can't find it. And so we're trying to get a sense of, not only how many people do we have housed with our housing choice voucher program, but how many people aren't we seeing from other entities in Boulder County Cooperative? Because before we all took it over, there is an agreement that said if people are housing groups in your community, or if we have people in older or someone from Lewisville or some lawnmower, they can't be housed. or if we have people in Boulder or someone from Lewisville or in Longmont, they kept the vouchers. And so what we're trying to understand is
The resident kept the vouchers.
No, the agencies.
They're not porting across.
They're not porting across. And which, and many of the issues I talked about, that's, you know, we have a lot of people from these other agencies that are in our community and they're not porting. And so what we're trying to do is to get a sense of what that really looks like, to understand, do we need to have a different conversation? Because it may or may not, it may be a wash. We could be ahead or we could be behind, but we think we need to figure out whether or not we're behind. Because that really impacts our community. So a lot of work going into the voucher work right now.
I just have one question. If they, if they don't port, I'm going to assume they've got, they've got people, they need a voucher, this is whatever the municipality is or whatever. They're moving that voucher over to another county.
No, so we have, so in Longmont, we have people with housing choice vouchers that have, their vouchers come from the LHA or Boulder Housing Partners or Boulder County Housing Authority. They're all, we're all here, but we're all operating our vouchers countywide. And so the, what the analysis we're doing is finding out the data that we can about how many of people, how much are we sharing across the three? Because the reason that it was put in that, that agreement originally was to reduce the amount of administrative paperwork from crisscrossing all over. And it does, it allows people to have, you know, more choice of where they can live. But it's been a long time since we looked at what are the numbers actually going to look like? So that's the answer.
But if a, if a voucher doesn't, isn't ported with a resident, then that agency hangs on to that voucher.
Correct.
Then are they awarding that voucher to another resident?
Uh, yes.
What happens?
So if it's ported, so for example, right now, somebody moves from the Fort Collins Housing Authority or the Loughlin Housing Authority and it comes into our jurisdiction, we have the choice of wanting to port it over or not port it over. Minimal administrative fees involved. But when you look at the dollar amount, when we talked about project-based vouchers, it does impact that because it's based on your total dollars in the category system. And so that's what we're trying to understand, what's the nuances and what's the impact to us? And when I mentioned it to you, Molly, you know, when I also see the housing numbers and the cost of rental housing and some of the other things, you know, obviously Longmont's the lowest cost of the category. And if I'm seeing people, we're giving vouchers to out of our system, we can't find them utilized, I want to figure out why and what does that really mean? So we don't know what the answer is, we just know we need to look at it and understand what's, what are we losing, what can we gain? And to figure out, does there need to be a conversation, does there not need to be a conversation? But we think it's something we have to do, yes. It's a change, it's a, we're at a different time right now.
Am I the only person who didn't understand that? Got up to the point where it comes into this area and then I lost track of what the habit is.
So if you, so if you have a voucher, and typically the way it works in the housing authority world is, if you move housing authority A to housing authority B, housing authority B has the opportunity of saying, now, keep your voucher with whoever you have it with, or no, we want to port your voucher into our system.
So run the administration and do the inspections and recertifications and do all the management.
And I understood that part.
Correct.
Why are we not sure what we're doing and why are we not sure what the optimum for us is?
Because I don't think we've ever, all we know, because this is for any of us, is that there was an agreement that said if you're moving from city to city within Boulder County, you're not going to port it.
But the examples you gave were from Laramie County.
Yeah, that's the example because that's how it would work absent this agreement. What we don't know is, is this agreement serving the best interest of Longmont Housing Authority? Because there are implications on the surface, reduces administration, we don't have all this work we need to do. I think that has to be weighted against the value of porting it in and what that means in terms of project-based vouchers and real dollars. And we don't know the answer, but we know we need to look into it.
Just to re-say that one for a minute. So Marsha has, has a voucher with Boulder County. She moved, she wants to move along.
Correct.
The port would be to move the voucher to our housing.
And dollars.
And the dollars, but she's still, they're still those same.
Correct.
Same number of dollars.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's just who.
The only question is, who owns the voucher, right? If we own the voucher, it's my understanding, if we, the more vouchers we have that are utilized, the more we're eligible for in subsequent years, that's the reason we might want it ported. Although there is paperwork that, you know, whatever it is, right?
A lot of nuance.
So the question is, is are the margins enough?
Right.
To take on the paperwork?
So part of the new is.
Or maintain, let's just not port it, like the agencies will manage whatever they're going to be.
So we have, our voucher holders, LHA voucher holders can live in Lafayette. How many do we have outside of Longmont versus in? How many does Boulder have outside of Boulder versus in? That's the data that we're talking about.
And I'll be clear, where it started this for me is my gut instinct says when I look at the roll rates, it's hard to imagine that we have a lot of folks moving from here out. I think the reality is probably this way, which then what we're trying to figure out is what's the ROI in terms of for us in the value?
And there's also some kind of a question that can have an impact for certain law because if you're going to R dollars, suppose that R is in Lafayette, if it's, the rent will get spent in Lafayette, you'd rather have that than if it gets spent in Longmont.
But that's, that also goes the other way. Because BHP and BCHA, their voucher holders are renting in Longmont. There's a lot.
I can get it, okay.
So we don't know, but we think in any business case, I think you have to evaluate those things and really understand what does the world look like for us? Instead of just keep going down the road, we need to start digging into these things and figure out what is the best decision for us.
And perhaps the order incarnation of the LHA was so miserably distressed that they were able to agree to anything that reduced paperwork.
Yeah, I don't know how long this has been in place, it's been a place for a long.
Uh, it's centered around the housing solutions for the county, so we're calling folks on Tuesdays.
Yeah.
Okay, we need to move on to occupancy.
Sure, so, good evening. So we are still holding about ninety-three percent occupied. We're hoping now that we're starting to warm up, we've opened almost every single waitlist for LHA now that we start having some movements. I reflected down there what we have ready, we do have a couple of movements pending, some that have already moved in this month. I'm not going to go into too much details as it's already outlined for you. We still have four units down for methamphetamine and a couple of bad move-outs, additions. I do have a typo, I noticed where it says Spring Creek Unit 307, that's actually Fall River 307. That one will be becoming an employee unit, we do anticipate the manager moving in in May. The Suites unit that was down for the HVAC leak will be ready May twenty-fifth. And the other two are C four at Aspen Neighborhood is now rent-ready and the other one is just going through repairs and being worked on. Any questions on the occupancy?
So you had, you had a question on, you said, do you have four units down?
Yes, four meth contaminating units at the moment.
Yeah, and one said, I was just trying to see where you had listed.
They're right, right here.
No, we're, sorry, I was looking in your list.
Yeah, was that, you know.
Not the, all the pending.
I mean, do we have pending?
One, two, three pending, and then two possible additions.
Three Matthews pending, we just hit, are they all the two?
No.
No, I don't think any, no.
What is?
No.
Harrison?
Okay, so, yeah, so, okay, so the two pending and then two possible.
Yeah, the four. That's turning into an issue for us.
Where do we get the meth detectors?
Sarah will talk about that, I think this is coming now. We got a lot of them, but Sarah will go into that. The reason why I wanted Lisa to bring this out is this is now turning into a financial challenge for us because while we're lucky and we have insurance, we have a hundred thousand dollar deductible on each property. So if you have a significant meth remediation, I mean, if it's one that's not significant and you can do cleanings, remediation costs are what?
Cleaning with testing and everything could be about six to eight thousand.
So, you know, that's one, when you get into the major remediation where you have to get the units and then you have to rebuild them, one unit won't exceed the deductible or the, I don't know, the entrance payment. So, and you look at where we've been coming from financially and trying to build, if you remember in the budget, it said we want to start trying to build meth remediation fund, we're spending ten, ten thousand, whatever the budget's going to allow. You hit two significant meth contaminating properties and that starts really pinching the financials for the individual property. You're also, if that's double lending, it's, you have to pay to get it back where it's available, but you're also losing revenue if you can't rent it. And so it's a double impact to your performance. We are, we were meeting about this because we know we have one case at Aspen Meadows Neighborhood. And as a side note, we're, the city's got three days that we're volunteering at BCP and Habitat for Humanity Build Days next week. And we're like, can we replicate this process? Where we can do similar volunteer days within our structure to reduce some of the cost of that. We are now actively wanting to look at some, some groups that, for example, Habitat for Humanity can do this and they partner with nonprofits to do, to help with builds. We're now exploring how we can step into that same process. Once it's remediated and cleaned, where we can rebuild these units and work with our maintenance staff to do it so that we can bring down the cost, especially when we have to look into properties. Because, yeah, that's a pretty significant financial hit.
You had on this C four, Aspen Meadows, C four bad move-outers and
that one, we had fish teeth, full of urine.
Oh.
And that's the light part of that move-out. So it took quite a
Don't go on.
That's a number. So, so it took quite a while to get every So that did take quite a while to trash out that unit, multiple dumpsters, they left the unit completely over packed with items. It's now got new carpet, you wouldn't even know, so.
That is a bad move-out.
Yes.
Snow past, so. Do you have that for us?
Yes.
Oh, is it?
No. So I, the next report is the unit vacancy report. We will provide these on a quarterly basis so you can kind of just see how long units have been sitting and why they've been sitting. So AMN briefly, we did open the waitlist, April twelfth, we did extinguish the old one after calling about forty people. Nobody on the current list, which was a couple of years old, was not interested in renting anymore. But due to our processes, we have to go through the old waitlist before we can open it. So that is now open and the only unit we have currently down is B two, which is the one that we have to rebuild from the studs app. Aspen Meadows Senior, we have a couple vacancies. The longest one, that's been vacant for three hundred and fourteen days, that one is now rented. We've contacted fifteen people on the waitlist, but we're finding people that want to move in the winter or they're not ready to move. Briarwood, we have two vacants as of this report and I think we're gonna, we're looking at a couple of different options. We are looking to sell BCP and so that would just go to them, so we're not looking to sell those units right away. Fall River, we have their waitlist open, we have just one unit down for meth and then the one will be the employee unit, COM five one.
So on the, we wanted Briarwood, those that are eligible. Remember, we did talk about potentially talking to BCP about the units in backlog. We wanted to actually work with them to fill with their clients. So that if there is something and there's not that transition, then we can work with them. But we have a lot of work to do.
Yeah, we might have to hire admin assistants out of the preference, but.
I, I never knew that we could call down without. I, what you said, that when people don't want to use their waitlist position now, they'd rather move at a different time of year. Is that okay? I mean, don't they lose their spot in line if they don't use it?
Yes, so they go back down to the bottom or removed. They, and I, I believe two units, we're removing them from the list because we're not closing our list anymore. So we'll keep them open and we changed some stuff that we're going to leave our waitlist open until we get all of them filled. Because I'm just keeping the waitlist open for like the tax credit units, the HUD units. We used to take fifty people and then close the list and then start calling. So we're going to just leave them open, keep calling, fill the units and then close when we have a solid waitlist that we can work through.
We should make an appointment, I spent, two or three years ago, I spent a lot of time trying to figure out exactly how the waitlist process works. It was arcane and this sounds like it's more sensible, but I need to learn it all over again. So I don't, I don't want to take this period of everyone's time to do that, but may I please sometime?
Simple answer is it never closes now. It's always active and people are always coming in. That way you can, you can be more responsive and not have to reopen and go through everything they just said.
And so when a, a department becomes happened, we just call.
Well, we're, we're now trying to call as soon as we get notice to vacate or know it's going to be vacant. We have our admin assistant calling the waitlist, trying to get it filled. Up to three weeks before it's even vacant, giving them a lead time of four to five weeks. So people have time to give that thirty-day notice to their current landlord even. So we're trying to be very proactive and get these rented wait more, it's even ready. Longmont and Hartstone, those are our HUD two oh two properties, both of their waitlists open on the twelfth. And let's see, the Suites, we don't manage their waitlist, this is managed by the voucher team for us and the voucher team for MHP. She did tell me she has a couple more of these rented since my report, so she has, I think, six now in process. I know I had to buy them ten beds last week so that we can get those filled. Spring Creek, we do have four vacant units, they've called forty-five people on the waitlist. Two of those are rented. And then Village Place, we're going to be holding those for re-syndication. We're going to be watching this over the course of the next couple of months because the construction team would like us to have a couple of vacants for them to get into and look at and work on. But depending on budget, we may have to rent some of those, but we're just going to go month by month and analysis and work with Kendra and make sure that we're good for the property.
Yeah, on that one, what Molly learned from Aspen Meadows seniors is that it's easier to have the units vacant and redo them so that when you have to move another group, you're not necessarily having to move into a hotel. And within the property itself, what we're having to manage, if you remember when we talked about budget, Village Place was the one that was probably the tightest property budget we had because historically people weren't placing the correct units at the right AMI level. So that was not working like it should have. Kendra, and we actually went over this last, and Kendra has gone over financial analysis to say how many can we keep open and when do we want to start that? We think at least as of that last financial run, six to seven works. You drop, you go over eight, still positive in the cash flow standpoint, but it's too close for me to, to want to take that risk. And so I think I said to Molly, seven, I think we can live with. And so as we're heading into that, you know, January timeframe, we're going to be managing that as we're moving forward, so.
So to tack on to that, with Aspen Meadows, we did, especially for the first three rounds or so of, of move-outs, everyone went to the hotel. And then once we had some units updated, some people that, based on the experience, we knew that would not do very well at the hotel because of health issues or some, some, who knows, you know, plenty of reasons. It was really great to be able to just move them straight into a new unit, so that would be one. It was really great to be able to just move them straight into a new unit. So that would be one um option that was really beneficial. But also Village Place is bigger. We'll have more people out at one time while we're doing um the unit upgrades. And we're not in COVID where the hotels are dying for business. So it might be harder to find enough ADA hotel spaces. And so there's, there's a lot of moving pieces in every time.
And then logistically with the way that's, was constructed, it's like you have to take Molly's bill on vertical. Because of problems, so logistically it's gonna be a, an interesting process, but we think we can manage six to seven.
Sarah, is that?
We have a property update.
Oh, I'm sorry. It sounds like everything's a property update.
So I'll go briefly through this. I'm not gonna hit on every single one, but we have scheduled our coffee and conversations at each of the properties for the whole year. So those, each, all the residents know when we're coming, when Harold's coming. We've uh scheduled Susan Spalding and her team at one of those. Um, Sarah's working to get some other training. So we're updating their notifications with what's happening at each coffee conversation so that they're well informed way in advance. Um, we are no longer working on the spring declutter events. They are all scheduled starting next week where we are going to be bringing dumpsters at, to each of the properties to help the residents after doing annual inspections. A lot of them had extra stuff and they're like, I just don't know how to get rid of it. I can't get rid of it. I don't have help to get rid of it. So we will be working as a team and with some volunteers to the city's volunteer program. If the residents can get the item to their door, a volunteer or my staff will get it from the door to the dumpster. So this is gonna let, help them downsize, get rid of the stuff they've been wanting to get rid of. I had a gentleman come up to me today. He's like, I have a king size bed that I've been trying to get rid of for eight months. I have no help. But if I slide it to the door, you'll get it down. I said guaranteed we'll get it down, so.
So I have a question on that. So you say everything goes into the dumpster. Is there anything that could be recycled and we can call, have to have the
We are working, well, a lot of them have some restrictions, so, but we, Molly and I have talked and discussed about um kind of starting to if we have good furniture, if residents want to donate it and starting a program, that if we have a resident who moves in and doesn't have a lot of furniture, like we have Marshall fire victims, we've had uh different flood victims, people who've lost their homes suddenly, that we would have kind of like a storage unit kind of full of furniture that they can come, pick out a couple items to help get settled the first few times. So we are, we have a few units. Um, we had a resident who um unfortunately passed, but the family has basically gifted everything to L H A to do with what we want. And so she had brand new pots and pans and everything. And so we're gonna hold those aside and keep those in the storage.
Okay, good.
So, not everything's going to the dumpster, yeah.
Stuff going to the dumpster. Why do we bother with saying recycle, recycle stuff about that?
And so those are all scheduled starting next week through the end of, uh, middle of June. Then we have Cinco de Mayo events planned out all the properties. So uh, L H A staff will be cooking for the residents and just having kind of a, a fun time. So we have those, that whole first week of May. Let me know if you want to attend, eleven A M and three P M every day.
Eleven to three or?
Eleven o'clock to one and then three to five at the next.
At all the units?
At all the properties. There'll be different ones each day, but if you're interested, let me know.
When are the coffee and conversations?
Monthly and so
I know, like the timeframe when you're working.
So I, I, I can provide your listeners.
Too bad.
Yeah, so we have some, um, four o'clock in the afternoon, our couple of them, like Village Place is always four P M. Um, Aspen Senior is always four P M. We have some as early as ten A Ms. And like I said, Harold attends about once a quarter to just give the residents an update of what's going on. On the backside of L H A, that's um more overhead. And then even today, he's giving city updates for those who are requiring.
Yeah, I think the, the tender in those conversations has changed dramatically uh since we started having them larger. And so it's actually good to see. Um, I think a lot of them were really dominated by problems or things that were going on. I think they're less problem oriented and more aspirational. And so I think that's a really good switch that you wanna see. We're talking about how are we using our resident funds or what are the activities? And um, it was not uncommon for some of them for us to go overtime every time. And in some cases, it's literally, they never had any more questions for me. You can ask me anything and there's really not. So I think, I think that's just, we're continuing to plug forward in the right direction.
Few quick property things. The Suites, we, um, the Suites Hearthstone and Lodge, they had their new resource specialist start on the twenty-seventh. Uh, Valerie is already building great rapport with all the residents. She's very active. She's out there on the sites, talking with them. Um, she went with even the manager to do some of the annual inspections at the Suites. And she stayed with a resident for an hour who was having some anxiety over the inspection. And so she stayed with the resident afterwards and just like, let me help you. What's your situation? And just kind of worked her through that so that she was in a good spot afterwards. Um, Aspen Meadows Senior, the Lodge and the Hearthstone, we've uh partnered with Metropolitan State University for nutrition program. So they've held, held their kickoff program and this will be a year to two year study where, not study, well, the students are doing a study, but they're bringing nutritional programs into the property along with farm standard produce, teaching the residents um how to make food last longer, how to read labels correctly and how to make nutritious meals even off a dollar store menu. So it's gonna be, and they'll bring other fun events into it, not just nutrition, but that is their main focus is the nutrition piece. We've hired all of the L H A open positions and offer was accepted for our H C V specialist this week. So that will fill the last vacant position.
This is the first time in, if we're on three years, but we will. But we will have every position filled.
That doesn't make it easier.
Yeah, I think, you know, like we talked about when we moved in, I, I think we're still under staff, but we're limited financially. Just getting those base positions filled, um, I think is what you stand for.
Good evening. Um, a few updates on public safety stuff, uh, our camera system. I just got word today that all the beds should be in by the end of this week for all the properties minus Chrisna. We have to walk up that property still with the current project manager at that, at that build. So that's good news. Um, we're also working, having worked with Dan Hill and E T S to make all of this work together. Cause the idea, the vision is for all these systems to be on one platform. So we're, there's a group with, it's led by Valerie Dodd that we're all working together to make that happen. Um, so that's exciting. I know the residents are really excited about that too. Meth detectors, it has been shipped and it's being sent to Val Technologies. He will then go and test some of the connectivity piece, not putting it out into a unit or anything like that, but just testing it by, you know, having it set on, you know, his car outside, you know, wherever he is to make sure that it does work. I'm hoping that we get that ASAP. That's coming from New Zealand. So, and it's being shipped by FedEx.
The one thing we do want to do with that is once he verifies that piece, when we have a known unit and we have the industrial testing, the industrial hygienist resident, start taking it in and start course quality levels to the industrial hygienist so that we understand how sensitive it is. Cause the data on it is very sensitive, but it can be tackled based upon it. So Sarah's got a lot of work to do.
Right, and we can get some information back from the community in New Zealand. It's using them currently and they, I had asked a lot of questions. She got back to me and I shared that with staff. Um, we'll, we have some work to do as far as what that looks like in the lease, what that looks like as far as what setting we, we're going to move forward with. So um, that'll be all coming to you soon. And then also working with Tracy Klein with the city regarding with Peters and Spring Creek and Fall River. I know he's been out for some time and he is part-time. My goal is to have that done by the end of this month or beginning of May. Obviously for connectivity pieces, if any of you spend time there, it's, your cell phone is, it's like a miss. Even our police radios don't work that way. Yeah. Um, and as far as residence updates, we're working with staff, you know, daily on resolving a few resident issues and and that, that seems to be going well. I mean, we have a few folks that are, are constant, but we're, we're working on trying to solve those problems as, as they, as we can. There's some things we can't solve. And that's all I have. You have any questions?
I do have a question and this is, I, you know, I've noticed in the classroom, you know, the level of mental health anxiety outbursts that are happening just even in our public schools, um, the last year, couple of years, um, is escalated. So I'm curious around, you know, as far as mental health and what supports are there for residents.
Sure. So, um, well, I'll talk on the L H A side a little bit. For my knowledge, you know, I may go back to Lisa, but the case, you know, where we see more of our mental health, and this is a public safety side first, but a lot of our calls for service and the, the tenants that we see or the properties, we see more mental health calls are at the Suites. Um, we do have, you know, a few others in and out, but you know, the new woman that just started, Valerie. Um, she seems to be fantastic. I was down there last week and saw how well she'd worked it. And hopefully that puts some of the residents at ease as far as connectivity. But as far as outside of L H A, Core is our number one go-to and they are almost all staff. They'll have four teams.
Do you pull them in so that if you happen that L H A?
Absolutely. So I, I um, daily, we have something come up where I think that it's a, it's a value. I call them and I just make that referral and they, they respond. Yes.
Yeah, and I, I, I primarily we came to mind was the Suites.
Sure, we do have an alcohol, you know, just yesterday we found out one of my friends friends who had trouble with alcohol, killed himself.
So, you know, just like kind of resparked in my mind.
That was better.
Yeah, so.
I'm sorry.
Um, you know, maybe it's a little sort of
It's tough.
It is, it is. And, you know, we're just seeing it hit really hard. It's cool. Um, I mean, it's, it's happened, you know, it's been a ongoing problem. I remember when my daughter, um, discovered the suicide ideation. Um, you know, when we were seven, stayed, you know, seven highs, dreamed of suicide. And the last few years, I mean, it is just spiraled out of control.
We have, we've seen many more youth and it's, it's very sad.
So on the L H A side, something that we're working on the whole, every team, um, all the way around the board is assessing what, what supportive services we have, who is served and where the gaps are falling and who is falling in those cracks. Um, because we do have, Valerie is amazing. She is dedicated to the Suites Hearthstone and Lodge. Um, and we would like to see what, um, what services are expected to come in from other providers? And then what can we go out and seek out? Of course, supportive services comes with a funding requirement, so that's, that's another thing. But we at least are trying to do the analysis to see what areas of our residents are, are falling in those cracks. And specifically the ones that are coming from being unhoused and making sure they're not getting into a unit without those supports um, to help them be successful. So we are looking at trying to see where we can fill those gaps and how.
And you know, you talked about budget and picking the budget and you go, how much longer is this relationship gonna have to go? It's gonna have to go a while. And the reason it is, is because when we're seeing these operational needs, we don't want to, we, you know, relit history and focus on positions here where we need people where we're up against the road because that's what takes us faster to do this transition. And, and so I think in this budget process, you're gonna see more of that in terms of supportive services and what we need to do. And that's important to growth because what I've said is to, to coffee and conversations today, first priority for us is safety of the individuals and safety of the community. Second priority is the mobility within the community and that we have an actual community where no one can live with each other. Uh, and it takes a lot of work. To that point, when, when we do talk about these things and you heard us talk about the severity of, um, some of the issues that folks have to deal with, um, we're also looking at pivoting in terms of, it's not just resources for the, uh, our residents, it's resources for our staff. Because when we look at the issues that they have to deal with on a daily basis, um, we're having conversations with R I S K and, and H R on employee assistance and things like that because, um, we're, we're gonna have to pull it as an organization and support our staff as aggressively as we're supporting our residents because what they deal with on a daily basis is more akin to what public safety deals with than any other department within this organization. And uh, so that's also gonna be operationally focused for me as we continue to move forward.
We just had a cooking with burnout training this morning on the L H A.
Can I sign up for that?
It was really wonderful. It's the city, the, the city's provider. It was really great.
Is there anything that the city comes in to do to let staff know that we really support and appreciate them? I mean, I don't know if it would make a difference, but.
There is that staff appreciation breakfast, you know.
Yeah, I've got some ideas on some things. I've got some ideas on some things I wanna do. And so what I'll do is I'll chat with you all about it. I don't wanna give up my surprise for them. I think, I think it's apprecia, I mean, you know, when you, when you see them, you know, I would tell, and I said this today. We're always making decisions that we're gonna make people mad, ignore them, make people mad at the decisions. What I wanted them to know is here's the lens of how to make decisions. Safety for individuals, safety for the residents, livability, and we're going through this. Cause what's at the core of everyone that works for, and this is a cultural change. This is probably the most significant cultural change that we have, is the entire team's focused on that. And, and we know we make decisions that some people aren't willing to let. And uh, if their hearts are in the right place, and that's incredibly important. And we're in the right place, right frame of mind legally, you know, that's why we brought Tim on. Everything we're running through then to go, or giving ourselves in trouble for doing those two things. Unfortunately, that's, and Sarah's not seen it while there with us. I mean, she can speak to it. I think that's the change. Uh, so when you see them, just tell them thank you, just show them appreciation because they're on the front lines and they're the most critical piece as we talk about solving housing issues in our community. And I would say even Molly's group on housing, what we're doing as a city. When we're looking at the road ahead of us in terms of housing, whether it's rental, for sale, those issues, they're in the trenches there. And so sometimes just show appreciation. And I probably don't do a good enough job on a daily basis either. So I need to say that to myself.
So we're at official point. Do we have any comments? Really, really, Marshall?
I have a question for the staff. I am simply asked, you know, how much does the city spend on this or that? And have had occasion to look for the L H A pipeline, right? So I know right now we're focused on Zilia, which is gonna break down almost immediately. And um, the North Hover, which is, could it happen even this year, you know? And um, I think I've asked this question before about not knowing the pipeline or not remembering the pipeline. But the real problem is I can't search for the pipeline. I don't know where it is. I don't want to be able to find out how much Zilia's gonna cost. And I'm, it, it could be me being stupid. It could be, it could be, you know, like the the live meeting portal is not so good. It was supposed to be better than this or not. And, and so if I, I just need a look, I don't want all the tests or something. But I sure would like to know how to.
I think we gave you a schedule, but we can reset that to everyone. Um, the challenge with cost is to be frank.
I know, I know that.
Cause that changes.
Yeah, nobody cares. I mean, the, you know, the, nobody cares about the details and, and ballpark and, and the timeline and, and, you know, I never throw away any emails, but I but I can't read all of them.
Right.
So I need to be able to know what the key word is to, to search it. I failed for the last three days.
So we're reworking our housing sites now. I know that that's, there's a lot of work on that, but we are going to have to upload it some more.
So, seeing no other comments, can I have a question?
I have a question.
Okay, so we have our commissioner, Waters and my commissioner, Phil T. Martin, and all those, you can say that.
I have.